We are calling to order this meeting of the Monroe County Council for Tuesday, May 23rd. And I would like to note for the record that all council members are here in person, albeit some of us just a little late. But we're, we're here and we're ready to roll. So with moving on to adoption of the agenda, are there any additions or deletions from tonight's agenda?
Madam President, I move and request that Item 7 and ARPA Additional Appropriation request be actually tabled to the June 27th work session. I further move that Item 12 Discussion Review Draft Resolution 2023-15 Supporter Project 46 move to follow Item Number 5. I finally request the addition of Item 12B Discussion of ARPA Projects and Funding for it to immediately follow the Project 46 Discussion.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on those changes? I have a comment, which is that somebody might have to keep me in line.
Yeah, me too.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call vote to approve all those changes? Do we need a roll call vote, Kim? We don't, right? Yeah, okay. So a voice vote, all in favor of changing the agenda as the motion described, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Okay. At this time, we have public comment for items not on our agenda. And I do believe we have someone who let us know that they had a public comment ahead of time. So you're welcome to come on up and have a seat at the table with us. And then if anyone else has one, if you're on Zoom, raise a hand. If you're here, just get on up whenever we're looking like we're in a lull between folks. Welcome.
Make it green.
Great, I do have some slides, I think.
Okay. TSD, do you have the PowerPoint slides? Someone came to public comment very prepared.
They're looking like, no. Jeff, I think you've...
I said I can't get to them, but I sent them to, to Zoom.
To Zoom?
Yeah, to Zoom team.
All right.
Well, I mean, I could always just do it from my computer then.
Yeah, if you could.
Or I can as well, Mr. McKim, if you prefer.
Well, while you guys are working on that, you want me to just start, introduce myself?
That would be great.
Okay, great. Hi, Linda Grove Paul. I'm the Vice President of Adult and Family Services at Centerstone. And I'm here to do some public comments and just give you guys some updates on Stride Center and the Stride Mobile Crisis Team. Ah, as if on cue, there it comes. That's great. You know, really excited to give you guys the updates. I know, you know, a lot of talk about 988. 988 went live July 16th. And basically, as you look at the crisis continuum, I think it's really important to know in Indiana, there really hasn't been a funded crisis continuum previously. So that's part of the reason why there have been some pretty significant gaps. And we're really excited because we are ahead of the curve in terms of putting together the Stride Coalition and getting the Stride Center up and running. So when you look at the three components of a crisis continuum and the 988, when they talk about it nationally and, you know, in each of the states, it is a place to call. So there's that 988 number. We also have a number that you can call, a place to go in lieu of the hospital or jail. So where do you take somebody, especially, you know, 2:00 in the morning, a person's in crisis? There's not necessarily great alternatives to jail or an ED. And that might not be appropriate for a person with mental health or substance crisis. And then finally, someone to respond. So if you make a call and somebody actually needs to physically go and be with that person who's in crisis, that's where the Mobile Crisis Team comes in. So I want to just give you guys a little bit of an update on kind of the numbers and how things have been going at Stride. And then also let you know, you know, we're just finishing our third year at Stride. And then we applied for SAMSA, which is a federal grant, to expand to a second Stride Center. So we have one in Columbus now that opened a month and a half ago. And, you know, just great, great uptake by the community, law enforcement. You know, they've spent a lot of time coming over here, talking to Chief Decoff, talking with the former sheriff here to get that up and running. And, you know, we've definitely had tremendous success already. But the, the second component was to say at both of the Stride Centers, we really need to have mobile crisis. And so it really is sort of part and parcel with Stride. So the staff are all co-located. And one of the big things that we saw in terms of a need is a lot of people need to have that place to go, need to de-escalate, need to feel better, need to get connected with community resources. But sometimes they need another level of care, which isn't necessarily the hospital. It may be an acute care hospital. It might be a substance facility, you know, could be a person who overdosed. And when you've overdosed, you are really physically going through a very difficult time. You go to the hospital, you're typically going to be medically cleared. And a lot of folks are like, I'm not really ready to go home. But they're not necessarily ready to make that leap for that next level of care. So by coming to someplace like Stride, waiting eight hours till they start to physically feel better, then they're able to make the decision of, yeah, now I want to go back home or I want to go someplace else safe or I'm interested in going to treatment. And what we can do there is we can not only help them find a treatment center in Stride, it's, you know, wherever it is that that person wants to go or beds available, but the mobile allows us to help with transportation too. So that's been just a huge need. The other thing with Stride that I think is important to know is it really is serving Bloomington and surrounding communities. And we've been really focused on, you know, ensuring that we're able to get people to Stride if that's what they need, but also getting people back home. And I would say in this community, having people who end up being stuck in this community is a real problem. Somebody who maybe gets arrested, they end up in jail here. They may, you know, live out of county, but they may live out of state and they end up not having any resources and they can't get home. And so we do a lot of work to ensure that people are able to get to where their support system is, which is a win-win all the way around. So anyway, that just kind of gives you an idea of why it's so important that we connect that. Mobile Crisis Week opened, we started doing some mobile at the end of November and then we went full-time 24/7 on January the 3rd. And since then, you know, we've, we've been going 24/7 since. Next slide, please. Just a little bit of data in terms of the, the people that we've seen. This just gives you a sense of the numbers of individuals that we've served since we first opened. So that first block is year one, second, year two, and then year three is what we've done thus far year-to-date. So you can see that it's significantly higher. And then the green is what we estimate if we continue with our numbers. Now, we started during, you know, the height of COVID. So that definitely impacted some of our uptake. Next slide. And, you know, again, just kind of tells the story that we're continuing to, to serve more guests over time. Next slide. The demographics of the people that we serve, boy, it'd be nice if I can't see any of it. But hey, I, I know the data pretty well. I think that, you know, that, that first, that first grouping really just shows how many times people are coming in. And I think that's really important data because what we find is 95%. So where you see the bubble in the middle, where it says diversion type, it's really showing why they're here. So 95% either have a mental health, a substance, or co-occurring. So we're saying 95% of the people self-identify that, you know, I have one or the other or both.
Recording in progress.
And, and so, yeah. Looking at the comments, I can't get to... So anyway, so 95%, but as you can see of the guests who are coming, almost 82% are unhoused. And what we see is we see a lot of those folks coming back again and again. And that's great because for those individuals, while they may have a mental health or substance issue, when they first come in, they're not interested in talking about the mental health or substance, right? They really are saying, I need housing, I need medical care, I need to get on insurance. I want food. I'm looking for some, some other resources in the community. And they're really establishing relationships. And I think it's really important to know that our staff are all trained crisis staff. So it's a crisis staff member or a crisis peer. So a lot of lived experience where you have a lot of people who are like, oh, these folks are really able to, to relate to me. So I think that's really important. So when you look at the demographics in terms of the people coming, is what we find is a lot of people who are pretty ambivalent about what they need. I mean, they can come in, they can be actively using as long as they're safe and they're willing to, you know, abide by the rules that we have, they're, they're able to stay with us. It is 23 hours or less at Stride. So, you know, it's not a shelter and we want to be really clear that this is for individuals who are in crisis. We coordinate well with the shelters that are in town. But those individuals that, that end up coming back, oftentimes, you know, three, four, seven times in, they're saying, yeah, I know I have a problem with math, can you please help me get in? So that's a big part of the, the folks that we're serving. That first bubble on the left-hand side in terms of referral sources, you can see more than half are self-referred, so they're coming in on their own. But you can see about a quarter still are law enforcement. So, you know, they know these individuals have a mental health or substance issue. They don't need to be arrested, they don't need to be detained, but they need help. So they're bringing folks over to us and then also significant partnership with IU Health. And then you can just see some of the demographics in terms of the people that we serve. You know, still about 80% is Caucasian, the other half are ethnic minorities. And 66% I think are women, are men, about 31% women. Next slide, please. And then just some information on outcome. You know, we do a satisfaction survey with the guests that come. We really think it's important that this feels like a place they want to be and they're getting their needs met. So out of a scale of 10, 9.39 are satisfied. They also feel confident that their basic needs have been met and a significant improvement in their mood from before visit to after visit. And then you can see sort of what, what they tally is what their, the resources that they need. So I think it's some good data in terms of, you know, what, what individuals are, are talking about their need. Next slide. And then, you know, this is just data where we look at, basically in Indiana, because there was the Medicaid expansion. Really, all of our guests should have insurance. So we ensure that, that everybody is covered because if they need to get connected with resources, it's very important that they have it. And we've just partnered with various companies to really look at what is the, the spend. So we looked at six months of data prior to the person ever coming to Stride and then from Stride, six months post. And you see about a 30% decrease in inpatient and ED utilization. So a very significant decrease as far as Anthem's concerned. And, you know, as people were talking about sustainability, how do you sustain it? You know, you're really saying, who's paying for it? So I think we're able to, to really, you know, show some, some real savings there. Okay, next slide. And then this just goes to the mobile crisis. I already kind of gave you guys an overview. So since we began, again, late November, we've done 134 mobile responses. As you can see, the blue column on the left really is kind of... Thank you. Urgent and emergent. So we really started with in November and December, really working more with routine calls. Well checks would be something where we'd say, hey, can we go later on in the day, not having to go immediately? So that's how you sort of discern those two bubbles. And then as time has gone on, we're doing a lot more urgent calls. Next slide. And you can feel free to... Oh, you're the slide, yeah, okay, I can, I can do that. Go back. Okay. Yeah. All right. And then the average, okay, so median response time in terms of meeting with those individuals is 33 minutes. And again, that's pretty good because we are serving Monroe and surrounding communities. So, you know, you'd say in Monroe, it's probably going to be about 10, 15 minutes. And that's really important to first responders, right? Because, you know, if they're calling somebody to come and they want somebody to be on scene, they really need to make sure that they're able to be there in a timely manner. So that's been good. And then the average amount of time to resolve those crises is about two hours. So that's the time that we work with that individual to make sure we get them to where they, they need. And then the demographics, you know, one of the things I didn't mention is, you know, Stride is 18 and older. Mobile is youth as well as adults, which is a really important distinction because, you know, you have a lot of parents that are working with, with difficult kids and they're not sure what to do. Our grant specifically says it's supposed to serve individuals five and older, but typically if it's younger than that, we're serving the parent, right? We're really going in and working with that. So we don't have any, any age restrictions there. We can also go to schools, basically anywhere, you know, a person is and they need additional help and support. And we've had all kinds of just amazing stories about how we've been able to de-escalate situation. You know, law enforcement, other folks haven't needed to be called. And I think that was actually maybe on a previous slide that I missed. Oh, yes, on the mobile crisis response time on the 33-minute median, but 89% diversion from law enforcement. So it's really important that oftentimes law enforcement could be called. And in those situations, we've been able to prevent that. Now, some, we've been asked by law enforcement to go, but again, been able to send them on their way to do the work that, that they are training. So in terms of demographics, you know, 93% adults are what we've served so far. As you can see, it's pretty evenly matched between women and men in terms of, you know, just some of the educational. And if you look at people who are in crisis, appear to be a lot more likely to be unemployed, although, you know, there's definitely a, a pretty significant mix. You also see some of the, the demographics. One thing that I will note is on the race and ethnicity with Stride, we had more diverse follow-up for individuals there. And I think that's something we really, that's part of the reason I'm here. I want to get out, I want to get the word out, I want to say, who do we need to be talking to? How do we want to make sure that people know that this is a safe alternative? So definitely want to do some work there. And then you can see we're tracking insurance. And then this is just by the counties because we do have 10 counties that we're serving. Monroe is our primary. You can see 55% of the calls that we have taken or the responses that we've done have been in Monroe and most surrounding and in Bartholomew. We don't have 24/7 set up in Bartholomew yet, but we are doing some, some daytime with staff that we have there. And referrals, you know, you can see about 15% still law enforcement, school, hospital. Adult Protective Services is a big, you know, is a big place where people are calling because they really don't know what to do. And again, you're thinking about people with serious mental illness. They may be psychotic, they're not really sure, they're escalated, not sure what to do or how does handle the situation. So it's great to be able to have a pro there. And that is it. Definitely have some great success stories. I know I've already taken quite a bit of time, but just want to get that. And I think the, the big thing that I put on that front slide is the number. There's one number to call. So if you say, hey, we need to, you know, get ahold of somebody, we have some questions. Would this be somebody good for Stride? What about mobile? How does this work? We want somebody to come give a presentation. All of that is incredibly important because, you know, the people who end up sort of really saying, hey, you know, if you're going to call 988 or call us as opposed to 911, you have to have some trust in the resources that are available to respond. So I think it's really going to be important for us to focus on more community education. And I'm hopeful that by, you know, doing this and trying to get in front of people, I'll get more invitations so that we'll get the word out better. So questions?
Thank you. I appreciate all of the information. Amazing. Questions?
So thank you for your presentation and awesome information there. I just had a quick question. I'm glad you broke down the counties that are filtering. But like, the counties that we're helping.
Right.
And I know you have mentioned Bartholomew County has their own Stride, their Stride.
Correct. And they will have their own full-time mobile crisis team that will serve their surrounding communities as well.
I think one of the ways that we can do all of this work is if we can get others surrounding counties to help as well so that we can try to help as much as possible. And I'm just curious to know if there is any talks from other counties that are possibly considering their own Stride or something like that?
Yeah, you know, I think that one of the things when you're looking at sort of best practices, you know, even throughout the country is size of community. That's the thing, you know, you see, oh, yeah, you know, Seattle or Portland or, you know, places in Arizona, Tucson where you visit. It's really hard to say, are we going to replicate the kinds of services that you have in a very, very large community? Because we are not a very large community. And outside of even Bloomington, and the same thing's true with Columbus, it's very rural. And, you know, one of the big things that I heard from law enforcement is, you know, we would love to be able to bring somebody to Stride, but, you know, in Lawrence County, we may have two officers on at night, right? You know, so trying to take somebody off the clock is really a challenge. So having that transportation piece is, is really important. I think we have seen a huge amount of interest in surrounding communities and really having conversations with them about what that looks like. Now, I don't think that each community could have a... I mean, it's expensive to staff anything 24/7. I mean, it's the same thing with the two mobile teams. You know, it's, it's not cheap to do that. So I think to the extent that we can try to do that together as much as we possibly can, and I really, I am meeting with each of those communities. I went to the J-Rac meeting in Morgan County, I did it Bedford, I've done it. You know, we've done roll call meetings with Brown County Police just to say, how do we bring these, these resources together? But I do think if we start thinking ourselves more as a regional thing, it will be so mutually beneficial because transportation, I mean, again, once you get outside of the city, it's just as difficult for our, our constituents that live in Monroe or might be on the county line. And we don't really have a hard stop. This is where we stop. We roughly say an hour away is about as far as we will go. But in terms of resources, it's the same kind of thing. People are like, well, what about resources for kids in terms of Stride? And you look at other communities and they have community centers or, you know, I think we have to think about what that might look like because it's, you know, the volume is going to be significantly smaller. And we have some pretty good data on our volume right now. And I just don't think you could support something like that in, in smaller communities. But I think, you know, we have to be responsible in terms of how we are using those resources and ensure that it is a, a safe bet. But what I'll, I'll tell you from the surrounding communities that have come to us or use Stride is they've said, nothing has been more effective in sort of helping rectify the need and ensuring that people are returning to the community. And I feel like that has just been something that, like, we've seen firsthand, people who get dumped. We've actually seen a lot of fraudulent employers that are bringing, enticing people to do construction jobs here in our community, who, you know, hire somebody and say, oh, we'll pay you, we'll pay you, we'll pay you later. And it'll be three, four, five weeks and then they don't give them a paycheck at all. And then they're stranded and then, you know, they're in crisis. So we're hearing, I mean, I think, I see a lot of shocked faces. We're hearing things like that, that I think, you know, lead people to just not have any resources and then be, be stranded in the community. So I think it gives us really good information on some of the things that maybe we need to, to be thinking about and looking at. Yes?
Just a quick question. Do you, does Mobile Crisis yet have your own vehicles or is that still outstanding?
We do have our own vehicles. Yeah, yeah. So with the, the Health Foundation and the Cook, and I'm trying to think, Curry is, is our other supporter that has helped us with that. So we do actually have two mobile vehicles that we are getting insured right now.
Fantastic.
Yeah, so that's exciting.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I'm happy to answer any questions. Feel free to, you know, send me an email if you have anything else. And as I said, you know, really want to get in front of people as much as we possibly can so that we get that information out there and continue to be utilized.
Thank you. This has been tremendous and I, I've learned things that I should know and I did not know. If you see things and think to tell us things that you're seeing, observing, for instance, what you revealed about the employer. I had never, I had not heard that.
Yeah, it'd be good to get names of those employers and be able to get that out. Yeah.
Those kinds of things are helpful to us. And I think that we, we don't often do a good job of highlighting what you're, what you're doing over there. That, these are tremendous numbers, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and it's one of those things that you organize and you get all of those things together and then you don't ever tell anybody about it. And I know, you know, I bumped into Jennifer, talked to Jeff and Peter and it was kind of like, I need to get in front of you. So I'm definitely glad to do it. You know, don't hesitate to send us a reminder to say, hey, yeah, we need for you to present or somewhere else, so.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks.
And I'll just, for those not seeing the Zoom chat, Heather Supple from our Public Defender's Office commented that Stride happens to be right next door to their office. And she says, I can't tell you how extremely helpful they've been. We take people there frequently. So I just wanted to get that out loud. Yes.
Yes, I was, when we discussed this statewide, we were talking about, there was no method put together, how we were going to provide transportation. And so when I heard you mention the transportation situation, it certainly is a big part of this because if another county only has a couple of people on duty, it's going to be easier for them time-wise and probably money-wise too, to take them to their local jail as to bring them here to the Stride and then have to go back and leave their community unprotected. So that's a reason why we're fortunate to have it in our community. But I'm not so sure it works as well regionally simply because of the transportation issue.
Okay. We are still in public comment. If anyone would like to make public comment on items not on the agenda, feel free to do so. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand or type into the chat. No man else. We will move on to department updates. Do you have any departments that would like to make an update? I see nobody. Nobody wants to talk to us today. Okay.
Must have done something.
Ah, the Auditor's Office has raised their hand. Hello?
Hi. Good evening, Council.
Hi.
I would just like to update you and let you know that the commissioners have recently, last week, approved a contract with Baker-Tilly for ARPA program assistance. So they're, they intend to add that to the plan. And I have submitted a council agenda request, so you can hear that next month. So you'll be hearing from us shortly.
Great, thank you.
And this is ARPA at an expense that is eligible under ARPA, of course.
Right. Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Bree? No? Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate your work on getting that done.
You're welcome, thank you.
Right, I, I've spoken with Bree about this and I think it's essential that we get right on this as quickly as we can. This is way too much work and responsibility put on the staff member who has so much else going on. And so we need to, we need to put this on fast track and get this done.
Well, we look forward to seeing that on our next agenda if that's possible. Any other departments wanting to do an update? Then we will move on to council liaison updates. Are there... Are there, any Councilors wishing to update us on anything? Yes?
I would like to give an update as a former Council Liaison. I attended last week the inaugural in ribbon-cutting opening of Rumkey's Resource Recovery Facility. And Counselor Jeff McKim is now the Liaison to, and a member of the Solid Waste District Board, and serving as their President, which I'm very glad to see continue. And this was something that actually started back in 2016. So things happen, it may take some time, but this is, this brings us a second facility for managing our solid waste. And as we all know, it's good to have more than one service provider. Just the economics of it. And so there was an opening inside their new building, there was lunch served, tables and chairs. It was quite a celebratory occasion, and it will never again see another party like that, because it'll be covered, the floor will be covered with all kinds of awful residues, I'm sure. But there are alternatives now for our waste haulers and for recycling, thank you.
Any other updates from Councilor?
Again, I know that you've come in as Liaison, but I speak about what we learned while we were during the session in Indianapolis. And one of the updates that we received that really relates to what's going on right now, when they, when we were going over the residential tip being discussed in North Park and then on further north. Because as of May 4th, legislation has changed a great deal. And at the time that this was first discussed, they couldn't take it toward Richland Township, because at that time, legislation said you couldn't take it if your area had grown more than 1%. Well, we all know Richland Township, good for them, it grew more than 1%, kept their tax rate a lot better. But now, because of this change in the legislation, they could take that residential area, that tip area, and wouldn't even have to be a part of the tip. It could like be in another, there's different wording that's used now that they could use for housing that the cities have had in the past, but counties have never had the opportunity to. And now it's changed so that it doesn't actually even have to be in a tip, it can be in some other kind of area and draw in the increment in there for housing. And that's one of the things that I had suggested, that if we did, if we even thought about that in other places, I've mentioned this to others, that we might consider using some of the ARPA money to put in a package sewer system for these outlying areas, so that people would have the opportunity for housing that they might not have right now. So those are things that we'll all be looking at, and we have to, we have to be on top of this. And just like with the Health Department, whatever's going on there had better get worked out pretty quick, because the funding mechanism is totally changed, and the makeup of the board is changed. So we have to be really understanding how that budget works.
Lot going on there, any other Council Liaison?
And Jeff knows a lot more about that residential tip than any of us.
Any other updates? Nope. Okay, let's go ahead and then go to item 12A. As long as it hasn't removed.
That is correct, I think you got it right. Madam President, I'd like to open for discussion and review the Draft Resolution 2023-15 in Support of Project 46, Southern Indiana Regional Climate Alliance. And if it helps, I can read the resolution in full, or our Counselors?
Yeah, that would, yeah, let's go ahead.
All right.
Not the whereas's, though, right?
We can skip the whereas's. Whereas, everything needs help and we're great, moving on.
So I think it's mostly whereas's, but I'll get to the action items. This is Resolution 2023-15, a resolution in support of Project 46, Southern Indiana Regional Climate Alliance. And so the meat of this language now, therefore, be resolved by the Monroe County Council, Monroe County, Indiana, that the Monroe County Council adopts this resolution consisting of two pages to committed support to Project 46 in the following manner. Number one, supportive of Project 46's purpose. As elected members of the Monroe County Council, we commit support to the formation of a regional climate coalition with the identified purpose of developing both short-term and long-term strategies to address our communities and regions' shared climate challenges. Number two, financial support. As Monroe County's fiscal body, the Monroe County Council commits financial support to the Regional Climate Coalition for the period of one year. The Council may elect to renew its commitment thereafter on a two-year basis once a task force has been formed that identifies the coalition's primary goals and commitments expected of each entity, whether it be financial or otherwise. Monroe County's financial support will be based on the resolution of, on the population, rather, of Monroe County at 50 cents per capita. Monroe County's population will exclude the population of the City of Bloomington and the town of Ellisville. Population calculations will be based on most recent U.S. Census data. Total amount of financial support for Project 46 provided by Monroe County for the first year shall not exceed 30,000. Separability, number three, if any section, sentence, or provisions of this resolution with the application thereof to any person or circumstances shall be declared invalid, such invalidity shall not affect any of the other sections, sentences, provisions, or applications of this ordinance, which can be given effect without the invalid provision or application. And to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are declared to be separable.
Second.
Thank you, and welcome, Mr. Crowley. And I don't know how to say your last name, is Mia?
Mia.
Mia, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
And thank you for offering to talk to us about this. Would you like to provide a general background for folks who aren't familiar with Project 46?
Sure, if that's okay, yeah.
That would be great.
So I'll introduce myself and Sean, I'm Alex Crowley, I'm the Director of Economic Sustainable Development, the City of Bloomington. Sean Mia, as she says, it's like Mama Mia. That's all I remember. Is the new Assistant Director for Sustainability for the City of Bloomington. So she just joined four weeks ago, and?
This is my sixth week.
Six weeks, we expect her to know everything, so go after her. I'll give you a little background, a little overview of the purpose of Project 46 and what we hope would be next steps. So let me start back in, really, a couple of years ago. Mayor Hamilton thought that there was an opportunity to really coordinate efforts a little bit better. We were doing a lot of work in Bloomington, I know the county's doing a lot of work, other jurisdictions are doing a lot of work, but it was, he thought, boy, wouldn't it be more effective if we could kind of tie all of this together? Cut to October 22nd, October, I should say, 2022, we had a regional climate convening, brought 100-plus people. It was sponsored by the community foundations of Bloomington, Monroe County, and also of Bartholomew County, co-hosted by the mayors of Columbus and Bloomington. There were a lot of people in the room, private sector, public sector, it was a kind of kickoff event. The, that event led to a kind of formal announcement of Project 46, which incidentally is named ironically for a climate initiative after the road between the communities, but we'll let that go. The announcement of the launch was in March of 2023, so several months ago, not very long ago. And then on April 12th, City Council, Bloomington City Council, passed Bloomington's resolution, which is similar to yours, it's not exactly the same. Nashville passed Project 46's resolution on April 20th, so Nashville has passed theirs. We're discussing this one. And then Bartholomew County is scheduled to review their resolution on June 19th. So we have some momentum going, it's really fairly late-breaking in terms of the momentum, but let me talk a little bit about the purpose of Project 46. So number one, as I said, it's really meant to coordinate regional climate action. The idea is to not only have cross, you know, jurisdictional coordination, so between cities and counties, and then really sort of tying all of our efforts together, but also cross-sectoral, so public and private, and cross-generational. What we want to do is really have a strong element of youth in this. As we all know, they are the ones more likely to have to deal with climate change longer than we would be. We feel like there's an opportunity for us to all learn from one another. There's certain jurisdictions and sectors that are stronger than others. For example, the private sector in Columbus is really strong in climate action. The public sector, maybe in Monroe County and Bloomington, could be stronger. So I think there's an opportunity to kind of share, you know, strengths with each other. We also feel that the cumulative size of the various jurisdictions is important and will likely be more successful in attracting outside funding, federal funding, and other funding than just individual municipalities or counties without coordination. The other thing that we can do is really amplify the impacts and the success that any one jurisdiction is having. So if someone is strong at this thing and they can amplify it across a broader footprint, then that's great. We also think that there's an opportunity to build on the growing collaboration that we're already seeing in other areas between, for example, Bloomington and Columbus, or Monroe County and Bartholomew County and Nashville. And so there's already a lot of stuff happening between these jurisdictions, and this is a way to kind of double down on that in this critical climate action context. Next steps, then, we hope that each jurisdiction will formally approve a resolution or a similar commitment as what's already been done in some of the jurisdictions. With the funding, the idea would be to begin the process of activating an advisory board. To do that, we feel it's important to have some sort of staffing, and it's probably, it's not permanent, it could be a contract staffing position, but really kind of get everybody organized, otherwise it's just herding cats, and that's hard to do. Then, really, maybe the first action would be to complete a greenhouse gas inventory for the footprint. So Bloomington has one, but, you know, having a standardized way of doing that across the footprint would be really compelling, and it would set the baseline for all activities that would follow. And then this advisory group would really simultaneously be developing longer-term strategies, which would refer to the greenhouse gas inventory, but think about what the future plans would be. Just a quick note, in terms of how the resolution that you have in front of you is compared with the one that the Bloomington City Council passed, as I said, just in April, the Bloomington one has sort of pre-committed to three years. We thought it was important to kind of get out there, because otherwise it's a little jarring, it's hard to plan without really knowing what the trajectory looks like. I know you have a sort of three-year kind of implied commitment, but it's sort of year one, and then followed by potential extensions to it. We've also included this idea of having an annual community report, which we think is important, because it is public funding, and we want to make sure that there's a clear kind of reporting back to the community in regular time. And then where it's actually the same is, even though we were silent on the 50 cents per resident, we sort of chose to be, because we didn't want to force anybody else's hands to feel like they had to do the same thing or not, but we were committing the same amount. So we appreciate seeing that in writing in yours, if, you know, pulled it, but that's similar. So I'll stop there, I think that's a little bit of background, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, I'll go ahead and, if there are any questions for them?
I guess, I have a question and a comment. And first of all, has this been presented to the Board of Commissioners yet? Or is that yet to come?
Not yet.
That is yet, yeah, that's yet to come, they, they're aware of it. And I am not sure if it's being put on an agenda in the sense of.
Okay. I think this is really promising, this, we are way behind in Monroe County in even just coming up with some basic inventory metrics. And this, to me, kind of provides an opportunity to jumpstart that effort without us having to hire staff ourselves, which I just don't think we're in the position to do. So, yeah, I feel like we can make some real progress here without, you know, taking on as much of the administrative burden ourselves.
Peter?
Thank you for being here, I really appreciate it. And in some of the conversations that we've been having, I know one of the areas that counties and maybe other smaller municipalities might struggle with is, as Jeff just alluded to, is staffing. But also, the second area is resources. And the Biden Administration has been very forthcoming in releasing federal resources to help counteract the climate crisis. And I know that your office is very busy writing grant proposals to those. And so could you talk about how this task force, or whatever it's going to be called, can help leverage multiple communities towards realizing, I think, what was the language? State or federal resources? Yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, I sort of alluded to the fact that size matters to some degree in terms of your being attractive for federal funding, you know, if you can have an impact that has a bigger footprint, that in itself, we think, gives an application of competitive advantage versus one that might just be Bloomington going it alone or Monroe County going it alone, so there's that. The other thing is, and I'll give you a very specific example, there's a federal grant right now that we're doing, that we're going after, that is a U.S. Department of Transportation grant, it's called the CFI Grant, it's for basically electric vehicle infrastructure. It's a bit of a beast. And we did sit there and say, okay, we really should be bringing Project 46 people in, right? Like, this is a perfect opportunity. The time, the deadline is June 13th, so we're kind of on like total scramble mode here, right? So we've made the kind of preliminary decision at this point to say, you know what? Let's just go after it, and then if we can be successful at it, then maybe we can kind of go after it with an expanded footprint. So it's a good example of like, I don't know if there's someone that, you know, in each of the jurisdictions that's aware of it, I don't know if there's anybody pursuing it. It would have been great had this all been up and standing, someone would have flagged it, boom, it's out to everybody, you can kind of say, all right, who's in charge of doing this? And oh, by the way, rather than doing six or seven applications, let's do one that has everybody in it. And boy, isn't that a more effective way to go about doing? And there's a ton of money coming out of the federal government. So now, I should also say that ERI is doing a really good job serving, especially smaller communities. They have a, they've stood up a whole program to help, you know, exactly the challenge that you're describing, which is a community just doesn't have the people or the resources or the attention span in some cases to be able to like pick apart all these federal opportunities. So I would say, and, you know, just as a general statement, ERI is awesome on that, right? But in terms of how this would change, how we would have gone through that particular example, you can just take that example and really, you know, multiply it across all of the other federal opportunities that are out there. Sure, and that's a great point about ERI. We're really proud to be in the current cohort with the City of Bloomington. And I think it's one of the, one of the few times that both the city and a county have been working this closely together on a shared threat, which is the climate crisis.
I want to, I want to thank you all for being here to talk about this. And one of the things that I like about this is that this is a regional approach. We hear all the time, right, we go to conferences, we hear all the time, regionalism, regionalism, regionalism. To me, this represents something that we can do. What's more, it represents something that we will do and will be doing. You know, so many times I hear about, well, there's a division between, you name it, this municipal level and that municipal level, and this elected official and that elected official. Regardless, this represents doing, and we can do those things. The city can work with us, county, we can work with our partners in other communities. I'm looking right now at the resolution that the town of Nashville adopted. Their second whereas, they say, the cost of increasing floods and extreme heat can be measured in lost lives, economic losses, higher food prices, poor health, and millions of dollars in disaster relief. These are items we hear in here all the time. Even my constituents that don't like to use the word "climate change" or are climate change skeptics, they will come and tell me, I don't know about all that, but I'll tell you, the flooding is worse than it used to be. We have to figure out ways that we can work to move forward on this. Every elected official and their brother seems to talk about this at election time, but what do we do? And I think the county's got to be on the doing side. And this financial commitment, to me, represents a way to start doing this portion in a way that we could get to some action. We are not going to save the world in that motion, but we're going to do something, some action. I think it'd be significant for the community, and I just appreciate. And I just appreciate the county looking at this. I think this is significant. I think it's important. I think it's important that this county be a part of that. So thank you.
Anyone else have, Councilman Munson?
I too have heard repeated requests for the county's assistance in dealing with flooding issues that affect our city and also our rural areas. And those can be managed. There are ways to work them out. We do need expertise to guide us in doing this. And so I support this proposal.
You know, ironically, I should note that, I mentioned that the Project 46 official kickoff was on March 24th. Nashville school systems were closed that day, and the kids were home because of flooding, right? And it was the day after that big, you know, big rainstorm in March, and it was just like such a stark reminder to both of your points that, oh my gosh, this is not some theoretical thing that's happening, and it has a real impact on the ground, and it was just one of those kind of coincidences, but...
I would like to comment further by saying, not theoretical, but also not predictable.
That's right.
Right. Other comments or questions? Yes.
I want to ask kind of a nuts and bolts question.
Yes, please.
So we will be not, there's a not to exceed amount in here. So will we be creating an account line at the county to hold funds here? Or will it go, can you talk about kind of like the, I don't know who to direct the question to, so I'm addressing it to council president, but how is that next step going to happen?
And very next step is that the commissioners will need to approve an MOU supporting this effort. We just wanted to not hold up any process, so that's why I went ahead and put it on our agenda for discussion. But that's a good question, because those are the things that would be hammered out in an MOU. And I imagine, I don't know if you have...
I can offer a suggestion. So, you know, because you'll have kind of partial funding dropping in from a variety of different places, including, by the way, you know, private sector, where we're going to be, you know, hoping to get matches, that sort of thing, and possibly outside grant funding, we thought that it might make sense to have a kind of fiscal sponsor, right? And not necessarily a governmental body, but perhaps like a community foundation, maybe Columbus's, or, you know, just kind of spread the wealth a little bit. And so, you know, we have budget set aside for it. It was going to be our intention to, once we got a lay of the land and kind of, you know, could organize that, to maybe grant the money out from our funds, drop it into that fiscal sponsor. They would become responsible for managing the financials of it, obviously reporting back to all the entities. So that might be a simple way to do it. Otherwise, you know, if you have to start splitting up invoices and figuring out who has to cover what portion, you can quickly lose your mind on that. To be determined.
Indeed. Are there other questions? Okay, I find, I'm really excited about this prospect for the reasons stated, I won't belabor it, obviously. I was excited because I put it on the agenda. Hoping that this moves forward. If there's anything further we could do, let us know. We do need to make an amendment because my, our attorney has pointed out that if, this is not the revised version that was read, and it's a very slight difference. Would you mind doing that? Thank you. So I'm going to make a motion for an amendment and have Ms. Turner King tell you the contents of that amendment so that I don't mess it up.
So the amendment would change the paragraph, the second paragraph under number two entitled "Financial Support," and instead the paragraph would read, "Financial support for Project 46 provided by Monroe County for the first year shall not exceed $30,000. Financial support will be provided to Project 46 by whatever date the council wants to insert there, in a one-time payment. Monroe County's financial support is contingent on the approval by the Board of Commissioners of any memorandums of understanding required for this project."
Okay, I mean, I would second that, but there was a blank date in there. We need an actual date.
Do. Actually, should, this whole thing should be presented to commissioners first, and they bring it to us for the appropriation for this. So we're, you know, we're doing this backwards. We need to know that commissioners are on board, because without commissioners being on board, we really don't have a way to do this at all unless we get it through the Sofia Travis Grant Fund.
Yeah, it doesn't go anywhere without the support of commissioners.
That is true. I spoke with the president of the Board of Commissioners and indicated that I would go ahead and take the lead with putting together our resolution. They had a lot going on in their office, and so she indicated that that would be okay, so I did. Yes, I recognize it's not the normal way. The date. I have no idea how to make that decision. How, what? Because it's going to depend on everything in so, so should we say, make the date within 30 days of assigned MOU?
I think that shall suffice.
Okay.
Okay, so I second that motion.
Thank you. I'm very messy at motion making. She's typing that in on the screen so it's more clear. We have a second. Are there any questions on the wording change? Yes.
Only to say, I think that really clarifies that next step that my question was alluding to, that A, the commissioners need their input, but B, that it's going to be laid out in that memorandum of understanding, which is a little different than how we usually do things here, which is why I think it needs to have that clarification for the public so they don't think that we're opening account lines and appropriating dollars and that sort of thing.
Correct. Any other council comments on the amendment? So could I have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you. Are there any further comments or questions on the resolution? And at this time, we have public comments, so if there's any public comment on this motion, and I'm, there's someone in the chat who would like to make public comment, but they want to use the chat, and I just want to give them the opportunity. So if you could bear with me for a minute to see if we can make that work.
And you've got somebody else on Zoom who wants to make public comment?
Thank you. How are you doing?
It's Mr. Shelton.
Great. Why don't we go ahead and have Mr. Shelton comment? Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Jim Shelton speaking on behalf of the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We strongly applaud this. We strongly urge you to approve it. This is fantastic. A couple of things that really make me pleased about this is the cooperation between the city and the county at the, sort of at the executive level, if you will, or at least the potential for it. And then the fact, I agree that this is a community-wide thing, that it's far beyond our county or our city, and is really farther beyond the region we're talking about, but that's the best we can probably do in dealing with climate change. And I'm really happy to see that you guys, at this meeting and the last meeting, where you approved bringing on the intern to help assess where we are and come up with a plan, are great first steps. And I agree with Mr. McKim, we're probably behind the curve, but we are now working on it, and I think that's wonderful, and I applaud you, and I encourage you to approve this.
Thank you.
That's a good public comment. Thank you. The other comment in the chat right now just says that we should approve it, and we don't want to delay. But to that, to that individual, feel free to contact me directly if you have questions. I'm happy to talk to you offline. So now, I'd like to go ahead and call for a roll call vote on the amended resolution.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
No.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you. And thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right. Now we move to 12B. No, we're not on 12.
You are on, you're on a new B, on a, on a number that used to be 12.
It used to be 12.
Now it's like a mezzanine number, but it's a B, and it's the...
It is a B, yes.
With Mr. Thompson.
Please, yes, and I don't even know. Okay, we are going to have a conversation and hear from Ms. Thomas. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to share my screen. So I just, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, awesome, thank you. I'm doing this on a laptop, and it's pretty small. I wanted just to touch base with all of you about where we are with our ARPA project, because we are about 20 months away from the end, believe it or not, and it's a good time to look at what we've spent appropriated and what's coming down the pike. And I will be very brief, I promise, but happy to take questions as we go along. So notice the number at the top gives us that total ARPA funding. So beginning with what we've actually spent, what's been appropriated and spent, and you'll notice that some of these items came in way underestimated. So that money goes back into the available funds. So we have spent almost 1.1 million, which isn't a lot if you have 24.7 to deal with. But in addition to what we've actually spent on completed projects, we have a few projects that are in the works. And of these three, we know that the stormwater paving projects are continuing and will be completed. The money's just not been spent yet. We know that there is still one more outstanding invoice for the brine system. We are checking with Rural Transit on that remaining 20,000. That may come back into our balance of ARPA funding left to be spent. So that's $2.2 million allocated. Not much of that spent yet, but we believe almost all of it, if not all of it, will be spent of that money. The next batch is all the things we've appropriated and we have not allocated any dollars out yet. There's a lot here. These should all look really familiar to all of you. And these are the items that are in the works, as it were. There are a few notes there about amounts that are probably too high or too low, and but we do believe that all of this will be spent, but none of it's been spent yet. It's been appropriated, but not spent yet. Any questions on these? I'll kind of wait here a second to see if there are questions on this long list here.
Okay, yeah, Counselor McKim.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure I understood. So these are all items that have not yet been added to the ARPA plan. Is that, is that what their status is?
No, these have all been part of the ARPA plan. They've been appropriated by council and added to the plan from the commissioner's office, but none of the money has been spent yet.
Okay. Is there any, any particular, is there anything that, I guess, what are we waiting on?
Well, on some of these cases, we're waiting, we're just waiting on invoices, and so that we can pay it out. I think, you know, Osage and the fire protection district ambulances, these things are good indicators of things where we have, we know the money's been spent, and we just have to get the invoice and get the check turned around to them. The childcare at Ivy Tech, I think, is a big question mark because there doesn't seem to be much motion from Ivy Tech on moving forward on that project. And some of that was supposed to be set aside in an endowment, and we can't do an endowment, so I don't really know what's going to happen with that one. I think that one, which is here, one, two, three, four, fifth one down, I think that's the one that's probably the biggest question mark of all of them. The rest of them were in the works. So we're working on the rural housing repair, the septic repair replacement. Those are going to take some procedures that we're putting in place right now. And the solar project, RFP, is getting written right now in legal, so once that's done, we'll move forward with that. So these are things that we know are going to happen. I think the one that I'm not sure about is the childcare at Ivy Tech. That's, that one is a question mark. The rest, I think, are all going to happen. I think Beacon was awarded their grant, but they're looking for space, so I think that one will probably happen anyway.
And so the Fairgrounds Wi-Fi has been approved by the Board of Commissioners then? Okay.
Right, right.
Oh, and the Convention Center, or what are we waiting for on that?
I don't know. That's a great question. I know Jeff and Angie met with Felicia Topic, but I think some of the projects might get changed around a little bit, but I don't think that that is detrimental, so we just need to get moving on it.
Thank you.
Counselor Munson?
Yes, I wanted to ask about the ambulance project. Is all the legal requirements been met for that? Are they ready to move?
I believe so, yes.
So, so I guess I would like an update on which projects have already had their legal agreements set out, and which ones are still waiting for that.
I will get a full rundown on all of those for our June discussion.
Great, that would be great. Are there other questions or comments? Yes, Counselor Hawke?
Yes. What kind of feedback are you getting having to do the septic repair or replacement? And also, would you consider working toward getting a price on putting in a package system, say, near Smithville, or one of the rural communities where we said we wanted to encourage growth? In any of those areas where we know we're not going to be able to hook onto the city sewer, what can we do to assist those folks?
Okay.
We can maybe provide workforce housing in some of those areas instead of having people drive outside of the county for work, for places to live. They work here and they go back home to other counties.
Or having to build storage units instead of houses.
Or, or build a storage unit instead of a house, right. So that's what, I, I don't know what it would cost to put in one of those package systems. But I think we should take a real hard look to see if that would help out with some of that workforce housing we'd like to see.
Okay, thank you. So, so for septic repair replacement, I'm going to be meeting with the Health Department Environmental Specialist who works on that to get a list of the folks who are in need of repair replacement. And we need to figure out how to do the income qualification for that. But, so we're putting that together. And with rural housing repair, I'm hoping to utilize the great folks at the township. But I've already heard from a few of the trustees who are interested. I'm hoping to hear from the remainder who would help us with the vetting process for income qualifications. And then we have another plan in place to ensure that the projects are reasonably priced and without estimates. And that the project, the work has been done with photographic evidence. So we're working through all of the steps that will need to be taken for the rural housing repair. And I don't think 200,000 is going to be enough. Just hearing what the cost of roofs are right now, that's not going to last very long. So we may need to come back for additional funds there.
Okay, other questions for Commissioner Thomas?
Okay, so, so the last bit is we have a few projects. We're going to bring these in June. I know Ms. Gregory from the Augers Office already talked about Baker Tilly. That's something that we've already looked at. The contract, the letter of engagement, we have not added this to our ARPA project list yet. But there is the IU study of incarcerated, post-incarcerated individuals. That's on here as well. We also have the bicentennial trail. I know that you've all seen information from Ms. Ridge on this. The cost of the project increased exponentially, almost double. And this will get us to the finish line. We're very close to it. And when we were talking about Wi-Fi improvements at the fairgrounds, we also heard that there are issues at our Storm Park. So we're looking, they don't have the infrastructure that the, that the fairgrounds already have. So it's going to take a little bit more. So that's our estimate right now is about 75,000 to upgrade that. So these four will be coming to you all in June for your regular meeting. So we have a couple of things in the works, about 5.2 million. And then we have, still have the potential for the East Side Area 10. We, we all said we'd read on it, but we haven't actually done anything with it because we don't have anything specific. And some of that, again, is endowment, and that's an issue with ARPA money. Fortunately, having Baker Tilly on board will help us with all of this, understanding all the language and the requirements and making sure we're following the letter of the law. So in sum, what we have is that we have the amount appropriated and spent, the amount appropriated, partially spent, not spent but appropriated, new proposed projects, which we're going to bring to you in June, and some to-be-determined projects. And so we're going to have a total of 17, a little over 17 million dollars. The remaining funds available then is about seven and a half million. And so I wanted to put that number out there because I would like to work on the next round of proposals to get this ironed out and get things moving. Because some of these things are taking a lot longer than we thought they would. So I think the sooner the better. And so we wanted to bring this to everyone's attention and to get some, some gears turning, to come up with some ideas and to revisit some of the proposals that we have not supported in the past. We might want to revisit those. So I don't know how we are going to proceed with that, but I wanted to give you that number with about 20 months left to go.
Thank you. I appreciate the update. Counselor McKim?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, the TBD projects, can, can you refresh our memory as to at least what the big ticket items in, are there in there? Or do, is that?
Not really right now. I can't, but some of that, yeah, it's, it's kind of, it's kind of detailed. And we're just looking at some big ideas, and we're not sure that we can do it with ARPA money. So it, there's a lot going into it, and I don't want to raise anybody's hopes and expectations if we can't do it legally, so.
I, I just, I remember when we, when we kind of mapped out priorities, mental health and treatment was a big priority. And I'm not seeing anything in here related to that. I'm hoping it's buried in that 5.7 million dollars.
It's, I will tell you that some of the, of the, the 1.2 of the, of the to-be-determined relates to trying to create some sort of endowment for heading home.
Right.
But we don't know that we can do it. So that's 1.2 of that. No, there's nothing in here on that because we would have to be able to spend the money before the end of 2024, and we don't have anything identified yet. So yes, that could be what these remaining funds are spent on. But I don't know what we're going to have that we can spend money on in the next 20 months.
Okay, so there's that, and I would, and I would also like to see, and maybe that's also needs to fit into the 7.6 million. But I think there's a real need for, for some broadband investment. It's only in pockets, you know, it's not, not a wide, not a widespread need. But there are areas that still have absolutely no access to anything. And I, I think that there are some more resources we can maybe leverage if we, if we commit some of our, our ARPA resources towards that as well. So I'm, you know, maybe that's a conversation for another day, but I just want to put that marker out there that I, I still think there's some investment in the rural areas and broadband that we need to do.
That, that's on the list as well, but we don't have a provider that said, yes, we could use X amount of dollars and we will provide the service. We just don't have that. And I think it's not a close conversation, though. We just haven't had it yet. But that's who on the list.
Counselor Hawke?
Right. And I, I, I recall that we, we are allowed to spend a certain portion of this that doesn't have to be in some of these other categories. Was that amount 10 million?
That amount is... Yes, lost revenue, 10 million.
Okay, well, but we don't have, it doesn't have to be lost revenue. They, they changed the ruling, and so they, it no longer has to be lost revenue. We can use that 10 million and use it for, and so what I'm, what I'm saying for, and then click, 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 we need to have a list of what items we could use it for that doesn't have to follow some of these other guidelines. So that we know what some of our options are. We might not want to do it, but let's at least find out what our options are. And 10 million dollars that, that we need to look at the list of what we could use it for. Do you all already know about the list?
I've got other comments not related to that.
I keep thinking everybody knows what's going on.
No.
No.
Same book.
There was a list that we discussed back in January with a whole, that was when we ordered our priorities. And so it sounds like we, as a whole body, everyone included, need to revisit that.
That's what my suggestion is, yes.
Yeah, same page.
Or add to it.
Okay.
The sooner the better, because sometimes it takes a while, even if you know you have some money, it takes a while.
And especially how long it's been to, to even, we've appropriated the dollars and they're not funded, or they're not out the door yet, so.
Yeah, that's, that's worrisome. Counselor Deckard, did you have?
I, I was just going to echo what Counselor McKim is saying about, and I feel like I never say this right, but the broadband connectivity issues, et cetera. Sometimes government has to jump in with the private sector to do things that are just not getting done. The Tennessee Valley Authority is one of those such things that literally they, they were not going to have electricity without that. Lake Monroe was, was not, was man-made. Literally, now our water supply, and I, I see broadband as such a, the connectivity, such an absolute vital thing to everything. It's, that's not going away. And so if we could plug that in some way, we, that might be helpful. You know, and I still look at those ambulances that we've got there as that crucial vital thing that is, is needed out there. The demands, and this includes broadband, the demands of those who live in the county and what they need has changed over the years, and the expectation has grown just right alongside it. We were out in Heronsburg this weekend and talking with folks about fire protection. And they want every bit of the fire protection that someone who is right here downtown Bloomington is getting. And that's not going to change. So I wanted to add that two cents with what Counselor McKim is saying.
Thank you. Any comment?
So Commissioner Thomas, I have a, oh, okay. I feel like, oh, just throw it in my mouth. Hello, can you hear me? Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
Hey, so a couple of things. I do think that, I know you have mentioned that, that on your radar, that it's definitely something that we should consider trying to have a discussion. And I do like the idea of how we did it once before, where we had a joint county council commissioner collaboration where we talked. So I think that's definitely something that we could think about and hopefully happen here soon. The other point that I think is, I was looking at our list and kind of going back and revisiting what we had talked about earlier this year. And there's definitely some projects that definitely should come back to the forefront if we have the remainder of that. So I do welcome that discussion. In particular, I know for me, one of the biggest things is mental health, substance use as well. Because again, we all know that there are things that we can do in our community right now with that money that we have that we can help as much as we can. So of course, we can, leave it to me. I can find all the ways to spend the money. Just ask my husband. So we could do that. But the other part to that is, I know in the previous lot that it showed the IU CJRC contract for 83,000. Is that the Center for Collaborative Systems? Gotcha. And then, because I know that there's been a lot of back and forth and getting that on board. Do we know when exactly that is going to, like, when will that, like, start? And when will we be able to work with the researchers at IU? Because it sounds like there is really interest to start as soon as possible.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know if they would be willing to start without getting paid. So it might be the June meeting that has to happen first of the council. But, but my understanding is that the sheriff has now signed the contract, and I know that was something we were waiting on. So we're all on board, and so I imagine that we can move very quickly if we have the funding.
Okay, so you're, but if I hear correct, what you're saying is like, we're still waiting for another department, the Sheriff's Department to?
No, they've signed now.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
We were waiting. They, we were waiting on that.
Okay, gotcha. So we're still.
Everybody's signed.
Okay, got it, okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Turner King?
I was just reviewing some documentation that Ms. Gregory provided. And from my calculation, I think there's 21 ARPA projects. Nine of them have MOUs, eight of them do not require MOUs. Three of them were working on, and one of them is actually pending. So for a majority of them, we do have MOUs or they're not required because it's an internal project. And Ms. Gregory will provide additional updates on what those, where we are with those status. But for now, most of them that need MOUs have MOUs.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
We'll, we'll make sure we have a detailed list and, yeah, thank you, thank you, Ms. Turner King.
So I should know this, but are we looking to have a discussion at our, our regular session or work session in June?
We wanted to put this on the regular session for June for approval for these items here. These four, oops, the four items listed here. Just to note, we're not sure that we can do the IU CJRC study with ARPA funds. So we're going to look into that, and if we can't, we might just come for an additional. But we're planning, and it seems like everybody's kind of working on it separately right now. And I think we could just do this as one appropriation request for the council at the June regular session. Put all four of these together. Simplify things a bit.
I have a quick question about the Baker Tilly contract. And maybe this could wait, but is that a, is that going to be an annual cost? Or is that a one-time for the rest, for the 20 months, or?
Ms. Gregory could answer that. I think she's still on. But I, my reading of it was that it was a one-time.
Okay, okay. And I can certainly get that information from her when we consider it formally, too. Counselor Munson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I would like an opportunity for us to discuss council and commissioners the bicentennial bike trail proposal. And, because I don't think, we did have much discussion about this before. So that discussion is likely to take place at our work session or at a special session. What is, what is the plan?
What, do you know, do you know, where did it end up? Because I know.
It was on your agenda for today from Ms. Ridge, from Highway. And so we're going to, we're planning to bring it to the regular session with the other items in June at your regular meeting. Not the work session.
Yeah.
But she sent a letter that details how the price has changed. And there was a huge utility cost that hadn't been factored in. And there's going to, there was a change in the paving related to the shoulder, the height of the shoulder for the paving. So Ms. Ridge, I'm sure, will be happy to, to be present at the June meeting to talk through it.
Okay, so on our June regular session, I know it came to our attention very recently. And I just wasn't sure where.
With so many things moving around on the agenda, I was like, where did it go?
She's actually on the meeting. If you want to ask her questions about it, she can give you lots of information about. She's already on the meeting right now.
Going back to your Baker Tilly question, that amount is the amount budgeted to the end of 2026?
Okay, great, thank you. Font of information over there at that table. Yeah, Counselor Munson?
I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity for council and commissioner discussion of the priorities for these other projects before they are brought to us for a vote. And I think that's very important. ARPA is our one-time investment in, in so many important things. And we won't have another opportunity like this ever.
Indeed. That begs the question. Should we have discussion at, at a June regular session and vote, put voting and appropriating off? Yeah, have a discussion at the regular session of these items. Is there anything that, the reason why we couldn't just do that? Make the next meeting our discussion of priorities and, and what, you know, kind of pull back up what we've done, look at what we have from Commissioner Thomas now. Look at what we have from Commissioner Thomas now and, and kind of work through that. I know it's not a work session, but we.
We could do it.
We kind of.
I like, I like that idea. I mean, particularly with the, the bicentennial, um, bikeway. I mean, that's, that's a large amount, uh, to be inserted in here. And that may change people's priorities. That may not fall very high on, on some people's priorities.
Yes.
And so, yeah, I, I sort of think that that can't be considered, uh, in absence of other and lacking the context of the other, other priorities.
Councilor Munson.
So would it be advantageous for us all to, um, uh, review our priorities with updated information prior to our regular session discussion? And submit those to us all?
Yes.
Yeah, Kate, I don't, I don't know how you want to work that, Kate, but, um, whenever I put anything in Dropbox, it seems to disappear right now. So, um, I don't know what happens to the files, but they're disappearing. So I don't know how you want to, how you want to proceed with that, but you and I can have a conversation and.
Okay.
The best way to move forward.
Let's, let's do that. We'll talk and, and figure out how we can best get everybody's information the same.
I, I, I want to make a statement with regards to additionals with, for those projects. Um, I would have, if we were going to approve those at the work session. I would have to.
Yeah.
It would have to be advertised on the fourteenth. So I would have to have all the information by June the fifth in order to advertise appropriations for the June work session.
I, can we do it the way we've done it in the past where we just advertise high across all categories? Okay, that would be great.
I was just going to let you know, um, I, with regards to the bicentennial one, I had already put that one into the legal ad for the regular session. But I was thinking it, that was a project that had already been approved. I was a little confused on how that was submitted. So that one's already been sent off and will be, um, on the agendas, but we can like table it.
We'll table that one, yeah, for sure. Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that ahead of time, so.
Thank you. Does that work, um, on your end, Commissioner?
Perfect.
Are there other questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
We do have a whole room full of people waiting to speak, so.
Why? You think we want to talk about this though?
No.
Um, yeah. I'm looking, I don't even see this on my agenda. My agenda has been so altered. It's, it's not your fault at all. It's, your stuff is perfect. Oh, my goodness. Um, okay, that concludes our discussion and.
It's like a picture where it's.
Is that a fastball? I think we're at number six.
We sure are.
I know. Okay. Number six. Um, we would like to open the floor for nominations for the three members from county council to the Justice Financial Advisory Committee that we established. Do we have any nominations for that? Oh, hello.
Uh, Madam President, I would propose that yourself, Councilmember Crossley, and myself be the three members on CPAC, JFAC.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I would be happy to be on that committee. Do you agree?
Absolutely.
I talked to neither of you ahead of time, so I'm sorry for just nominating out of the blue.
And you're okay with yourself being on it?
I am okay with myself.
All right. Are there any council comments on this?
Nominations be closed?
Nominations are closed. All right. In that case, comments, look at you go. Could we have, um, a voice vote on this then? All in favor of the three members to the Justice Financial Advisory Committee being myself, Councilor Crossley, and Councilor Iverson? Thank you. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Let's move on. Item seven. Item eight.
Counsel, I move to approve the surveyor's request to change the classification of the GIS coordinator from a PATD to special occupation, having the salary compensation tied to the EXE A three year level and to simultaneously amend the salary ordinance in Fund one one three eight zero 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 cumulative capital development account line one zero zero two three GIS coordinator forty hours, special occupation non exempt with an effective date of May eighth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Okay. Oh, it looks like we have Mr. Inright Randolph on Zoom. Welcome.
Nice. Sorry, it's a little shaded, so you can't see me perfectly clear. Um, but hello, and, um, counsel, and I'm very happy to join you today over Zoom. Uh, this discussion is extremely important to the Office of the Monroe County Surveyor. And this is another step in building the foundation needed for the GIS division to continue to provide a higher level of service to the county and the public. Uh, we had a lengthy discussion at your last regular session meeting. And, uh, Dr. John Baton is in the Nate Hill Room. And I'm here on Zoom to answer any questions regarding the reclassification tied to the EXE A pay requests. Um, so I open it up to counsel and I'm just going to go on mute because I'm at a campground right now. And I don't know if there'll be any unforeseen sounds. So just give me a second to go off, unmute or go unmute when you need me.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. And, um.
As noted on the agenda, uh, this to come before PAC, as we discussed before, there's a positive recommendation to move this to council. So, uh, and that recommendation was for that special occupation classification.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, and since our last meeting, we've, um, had some information. We did some searching and I believe the latest, um, information came to us in an email this afternoon. From Ms. Moser. Did everyone, first of all, receive that email? Um, I literally haven't looked at it because that's how my day has gone. But this, what we did was we asked her to look at, um, counties that we felt were comparison counties for this type of position based on their community size, um, presence of a university in some cases and some other factors. So we looked across Tepi Canoe, Clark, Floyd, Vigo, Johnson, Delaware and Hendrix counties on this list. And I think the reason this came late is there had been previous iterations of this information. And she was just trying to update us as, as she was able to hear back from, um, individual counties. Um, are there any questions or comments on this topic?
Right. And, uh, I didn't get the information in time to review it, but I know she was working, trying to get it for us. Uh, but what I asked for was to see if the other counties, if they received longevity, because that's a big difference here. And also if the other counties paid for that perf, because that is a huge amount, uh, really, when you consider. Because one year we used the fact that the county paid the individual perf portion. That was just like, that was the raise for that year. So that would make some difference as well. And whether or not a vehicle was provided, because we do have a vehicle for our surveyor's office. So I just thought, you know, maybe we should have given better direction to the person trying to put these numbers together as to some of the questions that might be asked.
I will state that our GIS coordinator does not have permission to drive the surveyor vehicle. And that is a vehicle meant for the perpetuation of the county and our efforts. Um, on the other side of what my office oversees, we oversee the public land surveying system and we oversee the GIS information system. So those should be bifurcated in this type of discussion, not lumped together. They're, they're completely different operations. And yes, we do have access. I've actually even, uh, had discussions about maybe granting them access to the vehicle for GIS work. But that's more of a office type decision. And there is no take home vehicle or any extra kind of benefit for the office to have a vehicle. Again, the coordinator was restructured in two thousand nineteen and I'm the best student for supporting the GIS division. A team of two now, which is the biggest, uh, support I've seen for the GIS in my eighteen years here at the county. And I've been in the elected position since two thousand sixteen. Also, I was just currently elected as the president of the Indiana Geographic Information Council that helps, uh, guide and provide educational opportunity for GIS practitioners across the state. And I will say that the county is already behind. And to belabor this any further is just putting us in more jeopardy of, you know, not building the foundation needed to sustain the growth and provide this level of service that we are already doing. Go ahead, Jeff. I'm sorry to jump in there.
Okay, thank you. Um. I can't even remember anybody's name right now.
That's okay. What's his name? Um, no, actually, I, the only thing I, I just wanted to, I'm, I'm looking over Ms. Moser's, uh, past emails just to see what changed. And it looks like we had everything as of Friday with two exceptions. We didn't have the Hendrix two, twenty twenty three salary that was added. And then whether or not they were thirty, uh, or how many hours a week the position was for. Was it for forty or, those were the only additions. We roughly, we basically had all that salary comparables, uh, on Friday. Other than that Hendrix, which did come in at seventy seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty eight.
So given, um, those numbers, which I feel like, yes, it would be good to know some of those other things. But I'm also not entirely sure we, we will be able to find out all of that. Are we comfortable moving forward?
I am. And I, I appreciate the surveyor coming back as well as, um, staff members and, and spending time on this. I also appreciate Ms. Moser going out to get further information. I, I've said this in past discussions, sometimes the quest for data can end up having us choke on the data or choke on the process to get the data. And, um, sometimes you just have to figure out what you got to do. And to me, um, I think a compelling case has been made for this. And, uh, it's, it's time to move forward with it, in my opinion.
Uh, Councilor Munson, is that a hand?
Yes, I think our staff has spent enough time on this and we've gotten, uh, as much information as we reasonably can. And I'm, um, I'm going to accept the PAC recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any, any other comments?
I'm, I'm just going to say that the, the salary that this would, would actually set that position to is well within the range of the numbers that we see, uh, from the comparable, even if you count, you know, even if you handicap it by three percent.
So do you have?
And, and ours, ours is also for a forty hour position where some of these are for fewer than, uh, for forty hours. So I.
Okay.
I, I'm okay with it as is.
And we, we have a motion on the table. Yeah, I know.
I'm also okay with this. And, and I would encourage people to go back and look at Friday's SUDAC meeting, the Substance Use Disorder Advisory Commission meeting, because there was a great presentation on substance use deaths, substance use disorder deaths, excuse me, and using GIS and some of the intricacies about why this is so important and why we need a professional at the helm of this for privacy concerns. So take a look at that video. It's really good. Let's move forward.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think anyone's just here that you need.
Okay. All right. All right. Um, in that case, um, if there aren't any more council comments or questions, do we have any public comment on this? And I am not seeing my Zoom, so. Okay. Um, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Crossley.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawk.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. I'm on a three hour time, uh, difference, so it's four twenty two here. And, uh, I knew you had a lengthy, uh, discussion earlier. Thank you so much.
Go enjoy yourself.
I'm so excited. Thanks again.
Yeah, go enjoy your vacation. Thank you.
Wonderful background.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Prettiest overlook in Steinsville there.
All right, we are at, I believe, item number nine.
Thank you, counsel. I would like to open for discussion, review and consideration of Approval Ordinance twenty twenty three dash seventeen approving the terms and conditions for the grant of easement.
Second.
Okay. Um, and this comes from our legal department, but I believe we have, um, some folks here who can talk to us about it from the city. Hi. Welcome.
Okay. Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Tim Street. I'm the Operations and Development Division Director for Bloomington Parks and Rec. Um, thank you for hearing this tonight. I wish I was wherever Tron is. I thought that was a fake background at first and then realized he was actually there. So it looks lovely. Um, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the, uh, quote unquote, power line trail, as yet unofficially named project, but will eventually have a name nicer than that. First, let me start off with giving you just a little bit of history of this project. Um, this was a project that was originally conceived of and approved in the city's bicentennial bonds a number of years ago, before I joined the department. Uh, when I joined the department in twenty twenty one, um, this is a project that had, uh, kind of been on the back burner uh, among the bicentennial bond projects, uh, especially with COVID. And I picked up and, uh, we had a meeting early on in twenty twenty one with the county commissioners to sort of review the project, uh, given that this, uh, project would fall on county property. Uh, and quickly realized, um, that Duke, uh, had some major construction coming down the line that the county and the city were both unaware of at the time. Uh, and so it was sort of tabled for a while while we, we worked through a lot of the details with that. And we still see a lot of the Duke, uh, project going on through town. Uh, I did provide a, a slide deck. Is that available to pull up? Hopefully. Uh, well, while, while we're waiting for that, I can sort of just describe it for you a little bit. So I know you're all familiar with the property in question, just west, west of Switchyard Park. Um, along the south end of that property is a Duke easement that has been in place since, I believe, the nineteen fifties. Um, it's a hundred and fifty foot easement, uh, for two sets of power lines and transmission and a distribution line. Um, there has been a growing national trend of placing trails, uh, in easements like this because it is available land. It is land that is exclusive to other use. Um, and Duke supports that, uh, with certain terms and conditions that apply. So the city has been exploring this. We all know east, west routes in town can be a challenge too. Uh, and pedestrian connectivity remains one of the things that the Parks Department is asked to look at a lot in our master plan and strategic plan when we survey the community. So three major benefits of a, of a corridor here is, um, you know, that east, west connectivity, um, to Switchyard Park to the Beeline Trail. Um, this trail, uh, would be a twelve foot multi-use trail that would stay entirely within that hundred and fifty foot easement. Uh, it would pick up connections, uh, to the south to RCA Park, uh, and to the Habitat Osage, uh, community that is currently being built. And on its western end, there is some new development brewing in the Sudbury PUD, um, new housing, things like that that are being looked at that the trail could connect to and through, uh, to give future developments there access to, uh, pedestrian connectivity. and through to give future developments there access to pedestrian connectivity, cycle connectivity to the Beeline, to downtown, through those developments into some of the adjoining county properties out towards Weemer Road. Let's see. The need that we are exploring is, one, of course, the easement has existed since the 1950s, but it doesn't say anything about a trail. And so we worked through putting together a legal description that would describe the trail being allowed in the easements. The trail would be the responsibility of the city. The city would operate it, pay for it, build it within that corridor. And basically, the easement approval would run through the county commissioners. I know it's been on their agenda and had to be tabled, and so it is still up for their consideration. And in talking to Jeff Cockrell, I understand also that the county council approves land use changes, and so he advised that we also come here and present on the project this evening. I do have a couple pictures. Hopefully that is able to come up. We have a map as well. Eventually, also, we will have, when we get a little closer to construction, a three-way agreement with Duke, the county, and the city that basically describes Duke's requirements for having trails in their easement and would basically explain how the city will be responsible for the operation and cost of the trail. So lastly, just a kind of a review of the timeline of where we're at with this project. I mentioned this is a project that's been on the books for a long time, and we're hoping to move forward with it. It has been delayed by Duke's heavy construction. You know, they've changed all kinds of towers and infrastructure and made that substation bigger over there, and now they're doing the reliability project. And it's, a lot has been done, and they're still ongoing. So we've been in close contact with Duke on those items. So our rough timeline is that we are hoping to get the easement and the land use approved so that we can restart design with Aztec Engineering. Basically, they got as far as just coming up with a concept design, at which point we paused to work out all of these issues. We would have public meetings, potentially this summer into this fall, just to explain the trail, get public feedback, work through that. We would hope to complete the design by the end of this year so that we could finalize and approve the trail agreement between the city, county, and Duke this winter, and then go out to bid with the project in 2024, which would allow us to start construction in 2024, which would line up with the rough completion of Duke's various work in the area. So happy to answer whatever questions you have, and I don't know if we were able to get the map, but I do have it here, if that is something that we're able to share.
Are we able to pull up the presentation, or could we?
I am not.
I don't think.
Okay.
I don't think I ever received the presentation. But if you want to email it.
I will forward it.
You've got my hand.
That would be great. Thank you.
I do have a question.
Okay, well, ask the question.
Thank you. And this is, I think I already know the answer to this, but I, would this project in any way impair our ability to use the Thompson property, either as housing or as potentially a justice complex?
Bear with me one second while I hit send, so I don't mess this up. I had your email address, so I sent it to you. I don't have the rest of it. So you've got the presentation. To my understanding, no, because this easement is already reserved for power lines and cannot be used for other purposes. You know, whether, I know you all are looking at many things with this property, and so whether it ends up being housing, correction center, anything of that nature, I would think a trail could still be a benefit for whatever use is there and would benefit both the communities to the south, especially the Habitat community, connectivity to parks, alternative transportation, and certainly if we see increased development to the west, to Sudbury, and in some of the county areas beyond city limits, it would benefit them with connectivity through that area.
And then conversely, would the city still want this trail if the county were to build a correction center there?
I don't think that would affect our desire or desired use of having a trail in this facility. Like I mentioned, it is difficult to find lands to add things like multi-use trails to that is not already developed. And so having this corridor is sort of the perfect place to land. Ah-ha, there we go. Thank you. Jeff, if you don't mind, maybe going to the second slide there. Here is the county property outlined in green, RCA Park outlined below it. And I'll just kind of talk you through, we are at the Rogers Street on the eastern end. Moving west, the county property is very narrow to the south of the substation right there. The easement is even actually wider than the property there, but we would stay on the county property. Heading to the west, it would pick up that connection about D right there to Osage and to RCA Park. And then moving west to the edge of the county property, where the dotted line is, and I will put the caveat into that dotted line is completely conceptual as the Adams Street connection through. That is not necessarily the actual route, that is just me saying, hey, I know this is gonna connect through somewhere at some point, so. And then connecting to the west, potentially out to Weemer in the future through that Sudbury PUD that could develop. And Jeff, if you don't mind, flipping forward, there's the Rogers Street where we're starting. If you have another picture, one more forward. Here's a picture of what the easement looks like out there. It's actually very peaceful, especially with RCA Park in the woods to the south and some cars features to the north. And then, Jeff, maybe just one more is probably all we need. Sort of the conceptual alignment is on the next slide. Sorry, one more? I think we skipped one. Can you go back to?
I'm sorry?
Can you go back to? I think we skipped one. Nope, nope. Okay, just go to that last one. That's great. And then that is the, where it is narrow, the conceptual alignment through the narrow property, south of the substation. And then the very last slide I have in there, Jeff, is the conceptual timeline that I just discussed. Thank you for pulling that up.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, the visuals, the visuals, too, were helpful. Let me start with Counselor Deckard.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with that area, and I guess the question I have is, do you see the trail close to the power line, close to that fence line that's out there near RCA Park? What are your thoughts on that?
Ideally, you know, when we design trails, we try to not design them just in like a straight line for speed and other purposes like that. So we envisioned it would wind around and through there. Some of the topography would make it natural to move it around, some of the way there's sidefall, you know, cross slope, things like that across there. We would generally try to stay 25 feet away from any type of power infrastructure, which is Duke's standard as well.
And then, as far as, and I often see this area when I'm in the RCA Park kind of area, do you, are you thinking that around the trail, you would leave it sort of in its natural state, or how much of the easement, if you were like mowing, let's say, how much of that around that trail do you foresee if you know?
Yeah, I mean, I believe it would really be left in its natural state to the extent possible. Duke obviously does vegetation management in there underneath their power lines, and so they would continue to do the veg management that they need to do for their power lines. But other than that, I, you know, we're not looking at landscaping it or anything like that.
Thank you.
Counselor Iverson, I'll go back and forth.
Jeff, could you go back two slides, please? This is an interesting role that you've taken on. So if I'm seeing this correctly, the trail entrance off of Rogers Street is gonna be due south of the power station?
Correct.
Right? So, okay, so then all truck traffic is gonna be just north of where folks are getting on the trail as folks pull into that substation to do work, or Duke employees, that is.
Potentially, yes. And what I don't have on this map is, we will, as we resume design, come up with, working with the city's engineering department as well, the appropriate location for the crossing of Rogers Street. It would not necessarily be right there, but we've had discussions about a, you know, beacon-style crossing across Rogers.
Yeah, this is exciting. Thanks for being here.
Counselor Hawke?
I'm just going to assume here, since our county attorneys reviewed this as well, that this would in no way cause a problem with any that we've already made an agreement with, that we have said that we would wait for a decision from others. And for that, as well as anything we've done with the housing that we've already approved there. So that shouldn't be a problem, because even if they want to have to put a road across the trail, there's roads that go across trail always, so. Leave that up to the legal department.
Yeah, I've asked those same questions and was told that we have this will and effect that it's staying in the easement, so it wouldn't make, it wouldn't impact those things anyway. Yes. Counselor Munson?
I wanted to ask if there is fencing on both sides of this easement already?
Good question. I know there is definitely fencing on the south side. I believe there is fencing on the north side in places, but I don't believe it is consistent because that is all within the county property's border, so I'm not sure they fenced it because it is all the same parcel.
Okay.
So I'm not sure on the north side.
Yeah, I don't remember a lot on the north side, if any. There's definitely on the south side.
Yes.
Some on the south side has had some alterations, needless to say.
Yes, I have noticed that.
Has happened.
Not by you, but by someone.
Any other questions or comment? Okay. So we do not have an exact motion. We're just discussing and reviewing this because it is pending approval by the commissioners. Am I incorrect?
Well, what was the, I thought was a discussion, review, and consideration of approval, I guess. I read consideration of approval as we.
Are we considering? Considering approval?
To consider approval.
Okay, sure. Let's interpret it that way.
I mean, of course, the commissioners still have to pass it. It's not.
Well, we did this once already tonight. Why not? Protocol. All right, so no further questions on this now that we're considering it, now that Kate's reframed and is considering it as a votable item? Is there any public comment on this item? Checking. I see none on Zoom. So then, could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now, I believe, at item ten.
You are correct.
Thank you.
I will say that my parking meter just expired, so I hope if while I'm sitting, supporting a city project here, I don't receive a ticket.
I mean, mine, too. Exactly.
You've done those.
I'd be really annoyed with that.
Counsel, I move to approve the public defender's request for the creation of a new account line, 18501 comp time payout in fund 120000000, public defender supplemental.
Second.
And I believe Ms. Stuffle is on Zoom, I think.
Yes.
Why am I not seeing her? Am I missing this? I don't think she's been promoted. I'm just waiting, I mean. There she is. Great. Hi, welcome.
Hi. Well, this is just a housekeeping item, I believe. We're just trying to pay out some comp time to a former employee who has transferred to the courts, and the courts did not accept her comp time.
Okay. Are there any questions from counsel on this item or comments? All right. Any public comment? Then could I have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure, thank you. Now we have item eleven.
Counsel, I move to approve the clerk's request for the creation of a new account line, 18501 comp time payout in fund 12150010, election fund voter registration.
Second.
Hello, welcome, Ms. Martin.
Welcome. This is an employee took another job at another department, and we need to pay out her comp time.
Does anyone have any questions on this item? Another straightforward request. Why are you shaking your head?
I have no questions. Do I have any other questions?
All righty then. In that case, any public comment? And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay. Are we on B? Yeah.
Counsel, I move to approve the clerk's request for the creation of a new account line, 18501 comp time payout in fund 10001, general fund clerk.
Okay, this is an employee that was a full-time employee that has gone to part-time, so we need to pay out the comp time on that employee.
Okay, that makes sense. That does make sense. Questions, comments? Public comment? Could we have a roll call vote on this item?
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. And now we're at, do we have counsel comments?
I think that's counsel comments.
Counsel comments now. All right. Any comments from my councilors? Yes?
I'll be brief. Councilors McKim and Munson and I were down in Heronsburg this weekend for their Heritage Days Parade. It was beautiful. Town was gorgeous, the weather was well, and I got my traditional sunburn I always get when I'm down there, and it was gorgeous, that town. Should be so proud of that, and a good time was had by all.
It was spectacular, wasn't it? And we got to chat with Representative Paul and Senator Coe, too.
Cool. Very nice.
And I got to chat with the head of the community association and said greetings to the township trustee, Delma Jeffrey.
Nice. Any comments?
Just a really brief one. Really shout out to all the teachers over this past school year. Three of mine are in MCCSC, and I know they can be a handful. And so I just want to say to the teachers and staff of MCCSC and all the other school townships, all of those, we appreciate all teachers. And then Monday is Memorial Day, and I'm looking forward to the celebration that is always thrown and attended, as well as the daughter of Irene. That is something that is very near and dear, and I always participate, and I will continue to do so, so.
Thank you. No comments from this side? No. All right. In that case, this meeting is adjourned. In that case, this meeting is adjourned.